Good morning and welcome to Harden County Commissioners' Court. Today is Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. It is ten a.m. and we have all members of the Commissioners' Court here. So we have a forum and this meeting is called by order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledging of allegiance.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, Lord. As we go about and do the people's business, Lord God, we pray for wisdom today. Lord, we lift up all of our first responders, Lord, in our county, in our state, in our nation. Lord, we just ask you to protect those who protect us and we ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take a quick moment and thank the folks at McCurry of Essa for bragging Allen for their hospitality to the Commissioners' Court this morning. I'm sure to appreciate them for all they do on behalf of the court, the tax assessor collector and all of Harden County. Item number three on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive citizen comments from Harden County citizens to discuss abandoning a portion of a fifty-foot undeveloped roadway between block twenty-two and block twenty-three of the William Wee subdivision located in precinct three as requested by Samantha Granato and Cato Sustainable Timberlands, also known as Crown Pine Timber. And notice of this public hearing was published in the S L G D on August the seventh. Commissioner Young, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir. I received your request to abandon a fifty-foot undeveloped platted roadway over in Grayberg. We've had this many times, but this is just another one. She just needs some additional room for water and sewer purposes.
All right, anything further? Is anybody here that submitted the request, either Ms. Granato or anybody on behalf of Crown Pine Timber? All right, is there any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this public hearing item and this request that's been made by the parties? Does anybody want to speak in favor or against this public hearing item? Mr. Young, anything else you'd like to add? All right, one last call. No comments. That concludes our public hearing at ten oh two a.m. and we'll move on into our regular business. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number four is to consider and possibly approve the minutes of the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four special meeting as presented by the Honorable Connie Beckton, County Clerk. Moved and seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall and Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four and approval of today's cash statement. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. On our cash report and general checking accounts, we have three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. First Financial Bank, General Checking Special Money Market, twenty-three million, six hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and one cent. And Tex Pool General, three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents for totaling cash funds of twenty-four million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item six, authorization pay county bill as presented by Mrs. Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for July the twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth is eight hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Pre-approved expenditures for July the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first is nine hundred twenty-three thousand, thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Pre-approved expenditures for August seventh through the eighth is six hundred forty thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Expenditures for Commissioners' Court today are seven hundred thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. We have an additional bill for our health and life insurance in the amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-three cents for total expenditures and transfers of three million, four hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Gross payroll for July the twenty-fifth was six hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents and the total transfer for that payroll was one million, seventy-one thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Gross payroll for August the eighth was six hundred seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-two cents for a total transfer of seven hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you.
Number seven, consider and possibly adopt in order abandoning a portion of a fifty-foot undeveloped roadway between block twenty-two and block twenty-three north of the William Wee subdivision located in precinct three as requested by Samantha Granato and Cato Sustainable Timberlands, also known as Crown Pine Timber. Motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And rate, considering possibly adopt in order abandoning a portion of a fifty-foot undeveloped roadway between block twenty-two and block twenty-three south of the William Wee subdivision located in precinct three as requested by the same parties. Motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, considering possibly set the Texas Department of Motor Vehicle optional fees for calendar year two thousand twenty-five. The tax assessor collector, I'm sure the cook has recommended that we set the same rates for two thousand twenty-five as the existing two thousand twenty-four rates. And this requires an action. Say goodbye to Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion. Number ten, consider approval of request by Ms. Angela Gore, County Auditor, to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget in association with dump truck repairs for the R and B Ford department as follows. Create a new line item for, to increase the revenue. That line item will be zero one seven three six one one hundred, insurance proceeds in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and increase the expenditure line item by the same amount, zero one seven six two four three five one, vehicle equipment expenses. Motion by Commissioner Cook, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Does this take care of getting that one repaired or replaced?
Yes, that's one thing we're preparing.
Good deal. Number eleven, consider approval of request by Mrs. Gore to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget for utilities expenditures associated with the building lease for the AgriLife Extension Agent at four forty-five West Monroe Street. Pounds taxes as follows. We're going to move a thousand dollars from the contingency general line item, oh one oh four oh one eight hundred to create a new line item, zero one zero six six five four forty, utilities in the amount of one thousand dollars. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young to purchase an ally twenty twenty-four Diamond More from Shopless Farm Supply Incorporated in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement to be paid out of line item zero one seven six two three five seventy, equipment purchase and amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Move twenty-three thousand dollars from line item zero one seven six two three 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 four, materials and supplies to zero one seven six two three five seventy, equipment purchase. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to authorize a payoff to cadence equipment finance in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents for a two thousand twenty-four Kubota M six S one eleven D four-wheel-drive tractor, VIN number ending in thirty-five forty-one, equipped with a Terrain King KB twenty-two twenty-two-foot boom mower, serial number eleven oh two, and amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows. Take one hundred thousand dollars for materials and supplies and eleven hundred, I'm sorry, eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars from equipment purchase and move one hundred nine thousand, five hundred dollars to equipment notes and two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars to equipment note interest. Say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to accept the donation of a used nineteen ninety-four Chevrolet oil truck, VIN number ending in seventeen seventy-eight, from Brian and Brian Asphalt LLC. Mr. Kirkendall?
Uh, Brian and Brian, this is an old, uh, oil truck that we have for us in our day-to-day when we oil the road with hot, uh, hot, uh, asphalt mix and so our best corporate produce.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to purchase an Ensum five zero seven zero QB loader, seventy-two-inch QA bucket and a Terraforce YRG zero seven four seventy-four-inch Roots Rapple from Beaumont Tracker in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars to be paid for utilizing ally item zero one seven six two four five seventy, equipment purchase. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Constable Corey Jeffco to authorize the county judge to execute a memorandum of understanding between Harden County Constable's Office, Precinct Four and Harden Jefferson Independent School District regarding school resource officers for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year effective September first, twenty twenty-four. Good morning, Constable. How are you? Also have the superintendent here, Mr. Brad McCantin. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would y'all like to speak first regarding the MOU?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is the, uh, the new version of the MOU that we decided to do with what we had in the, uh, school district. Uh, the extended, the extended thing, it stayed the same, it just kind of refined some of the, the aspect of the, of the, uh, the MOU. But in that, we just asked for approval to do it to extend it from the year.
Yeah, I just want to add, uh, kind of add on to what the constable's saying that he, the county attorney and the human resources director spent quite a bit of time fixing some things that weren't, uh, clear before with the old MOU. We never had any issues, but we were trying to head off any issues with, uh, the time that they're off. Uh, it's sometimes different from the county as far as holidays and, uh, then y'all have summertime where you're off and what have you. So they were trying to clean up some things in that agreement.
And fixed it well and it's still works. We've been upon it in any way as we know it.
Now, as presented, it's for a ten-year term.
Ten-year term and with, where they're, you look at the back pages of the exemption. So it could be twenty, thirty days for the school district and seven days for us.
The ten-year term really addresses more of the revision of the, of the document, not so much the term of the agreement.
It's, uh, renewable anyway, up to, up to ten years.
Up to the, uh, the endowment and then it's.
Any comments or, uh, motions?
I would like to say that, uh, I appreciate the superintendent giving me a call, uh, yesterday. I got to speak with him personally, uh, to express my view on this. And of course, Corey and I already know where I stand on this, but, uh, I did get to express to the superintendent where I'm coming from, where I stand on this. Thank you for calling me. Appreciate it.
I'm going to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young to approve the agreement as is, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
So my question is, if it's a ten-year agreement, does that mean you won't be coming back to the court next year?
Come back every year.
It's a ten-year, we went through with, uh, Mr. Bennet and our attorney and worked through this and we would revise this every ten years to make sure legally that the contract is up to date. But it would be renewed annually by the court and the district.
Mr. Manny, did you hear something you want to say?
Just to clarify, the master agreement will not have to come back to court because it will be automatically renewed, but we will have to amend it because the, the payments will be different. So we'll attach amendments every year to change the payment terms because if you approve raises or things like that, that has to be approved. So we've decided going forward that we're going to put every amendment of how much that year will go into and how much we're going to pay and reimburse. And then every year after that, you will have to approve the amendment going forward. But the master agreement will not need to be renewed, uh, going forward.
So that, my last question is, I know there's been, uh, some discussion on, um, moving it out of the precinct for, uh, responsibility. Do we have a plan for that going forward next year?
I will work with the district, with our board. So if that's the, if that's, you know, your intention as commissioners, then I'll have to work with our board on alternative plans.
I appreciate you calling me as well, as, uh, Commissioner Cooper said. It, it was nice visiting with you. You now understand how I feel about it. You definitely had my support this year. I would like to see, see what our path forward is going to be.
Well, districts are put in a tough situation. We spend, we went back yesterday after visiting and we spend about three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on school safety, either paying salaries or training or materials. We get right at ninety-nine thousand dollars from the state of Texas and that was actually an increase. We were only getting twenty-six thousand two years ago. And so any additional funds we get, and not just us, but every district around us have straight out classrooms. And so you're taking raises away from teachers. So we're trying to find the most economical way to provide a safe environment for our students while still also taking care of other needs. So this is.
How much would it cost the school district to start?
We were talking yesterday and I, I actually did this in a previous district. And so it's, it's about a year-long process to put together like an ISD police department. And you have some other avenues, but, uh, purchasing additional vehicles, uh, making sure that you, I do not have like a evidence room. I would have to construct an evidence room. And I don't, right now, I don't know where that would be. But then, of course, going through policy manual, TCO and attorney's fees. So I, I don't have a solid number on that, but it, it definitely would be additional costs, uh, for the district. We're paying, I would say right now, we're paying in the contract something around eighty, eighty-eight thousand per deputy. We're covering all costs for the, uh, officers that are there.
And they're, they're not, they're not skipping on training. We're, we go through training every, every summer. So we're above beyond what the minimum TCO requirements are. Plus also, all of my guys are instructed for the, for the alert training. So we do alert training. We did seven classes in the last two years.
We've got, I think we've got, what, two master?
Yeah, two master piece officers and two advanced. So we're not, none of our guys are ready, just starting out. Our, all of our guys are all seasoned professionals. And we all have to go through the same training to do that. And we go, the school has to go above and beyond what we're required to do extra TCOs for our desert.
Corey, where is your evidence room?
My evidence room is at my office and it's already been approved and everything done since I'm already in a status office.
You said, uh, superintendent, you said you would have to, uh, have additional vehicles. Currently, the county doesn't have any vehicles over there. Don't you own?
No, I own, I own one right now, but I would, I would definitely have to. And we're already looking at purchasing additional ones, but.
And then my, my second unit is my primary unit. I'm doing my, I'm doing the elementary school, so my Tahoe is used for the school district. My truck is used for the constable.
And you are not, um, there for day-to-day disciplinary issues?
Nope. There, law enforcement only for safety of the school. No, we don't do anything with the school district as an administrative discipline or anything else. We're there for just the school, safety, door checks, make sure no way comes in hurt students.
Well, administrators as a rule should not be using law enforcement for disciplinary issues.
So do you have a, um, school safety master plan that you have created for Harden County?
We have a school safety plan that we injunction for the school district with injunction with the school safety, uh, team that we have in status for Harden County.
Can you submit that to the court since we're, since we're approving this so that we can see what you got?
We'll take care of it. We just went through our safety conference, uh, in San Antonio. We, we, we're above what their minimum is. So we're already above what the state plan is.
When, when can we expect to have that?
You can hear a miracle, miracle sent to me.
What type of agreement do y'all have objection, kind of, because? You have an MOU?
Yeah, it's a little different. It's just for response and we take care of everything, their day-to-day business with the school district. We have, I have a deputy at the, over in China with the agreement with, uh, the sheriff's office over there.
We have one campus within the Sour Lake city limits and that's Sour Lake Elementary. We have two campuses that are outside that are in the county, in Harden County, and we have one campus that is in Jefferson County. So we work with at least four agencies over a regular basis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working with everybody to keep everything together. No issues. We don't want no issues. We're all prepared.
I know.
It works very well. Yeah, it really does.
We've been having the contract for, since, I think, two thousand and seven. And I've been part of it since the inception of the name. At the first, it was, you know, Judge James, and then I've been managing it with the.
We've added additional officers since then.
We added three.
We did that when the state mandated.
Mandated it and we're the first ones to do the mandate. We have that officer there for sure.
Are these deputies that you've added, um, they've come from other law enforcement agencies?
They have, they have, they all have been coming from other agencies. One came from Sour Lake, the other one came from ISDP. They all have IS, uh, SRO training prior to coming to New York.
All right, any other questions, comments or concerns?
I'm here, Colton Book.
I will echo what the commissioner said. I appreciate the phone call yesterday. We have some great superintendents in Harden County. We have five. One's brand new and I don't know him very well, but they all work well together and they all work well with me and emergency management and accounting and including the sheriff. And, uh, just really appreciate all that y'all do. Brad and I probably talk more than any of the rest of them and, uh, he's always very easy to get ahold of and very responsive and I appreciate that.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
And I would also echo that. I appreciate the phone call.
Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank y'all very much. Item seventeen is to consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for materials and immolations for all road and road departments. Say goodbye to Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That one was even.
Hate to see the glasses.
Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Ms. Missy Sims, purchasing agent, to appoint evaluation committee to make recommendations to Commissioners' Court concerning proposals received for grant administration and engineering services for HMGP DR forty-seven eighty-one, April and May severe storms and flooding. Do you have some names?
Yes, sir. Aaron Tepper, Clay Woodward and Angie Smith.
All right, we have a motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Young to appoint the committee as presented, say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant administration and engineering services pertaining to the application and implementation, if awarded, the county's two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Texas Department of Agriculture TX CDVG grant and appoint an evaluation committee to make recommendations to Commissioners' Court. Do you have some names for that committee?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Young, Aaron Tepper and Clay Woodward.
All right, we're going to work Clay and Aaron to death on the committee. That's okay, they love doing it. Uh, Commissioners, just to remind you, we had, uh, previously identified some projects for this same type of grant. We were unable to apply for it. Uh, we said when it came back around again, which is now, uh, those were some overlays on three roads. Uh, I think it was Precinus and Haynes, Haynes Loop and Hilltop. Those are in precinct one and two. And then, uh, Mr. Woodward has quite a few people interested in onsite sewer facilities. So, uh, once we, uh, procure a grant administrator, just be thinking about those projects. If there's anything else that I look at, we'll talk about it all at that time. I just wanted to refresh your memory, that's what this is for. Have a motion by Commissioner Young. Say goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? And the, uh, the amount has increased, which is good, since overlays has increased. I think the maximum for this grant last year was five hundred thousand, it's seven hundred and fifty this year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I sit on that committee, so I asked them to bump it up. I don't think they listened to me, but they did it anyway. Number twenty, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for record preservation and shredding of documents located in the old Harden County Hospital and Annex Building. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. And just to remind everyone, we've allocated money from the American Rescue Plan Act to take care of this, this expense. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-one, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to sell cabinets, sinks, mirrors and other miscellaneous items from the old Harden County Hospital slash Annex Building utilizing Rene Bates Auctioneers Incorporated at ReneBates.com. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. And I want to thank Monica, are you still here? There she is. Monica Kelly has agreed to, uh, it's her idea to, uh, try to, some people would like some of those items that are over there. It's got, uh, historical and sentimental value and, uh, this gives the county a chance to get some of that money back that we're going to pay on, uh, demolishing the building. Any other discussion regarding that? Thank you, Monica. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-two, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals from qualified contractors to install additional parking lots and improve existing parking lots and spaces, including the floodplain and extension agent buildings, and appoint an evaluation committee to make recommendations to Commissioners' Court. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Do you have a committee to name?
Yes, sir. Judge McDaniel, Aaron Tepper, Judge Ingram and Brian Ullery.
Now, I didn't sign up for that. Is that part of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper, you say second the motion? That's going to be a pretty large expense and if we'll have to come out of the general fund, we'll have to make a budget amendment to do that. But let's see what the bids come in and we'll decide from there what we want to do.
You said Brian?
Yes. It's four people, right? All right, any other discussion?
Glad to see you, sir.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-three, consider approval of request by Ms. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute construction contract with SciTech Home Services LLC for best disabatement of former Harden County Hospital and Annex Building. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. These bids came in about six months ago. We've been holding on to them because we wanted to make sure this new building was going to go in to, uh, be built, the, the storage building. And so that's on track now and, uh, missed to check to make sure these prices were still good and they are. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-four, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute construction contract with TRT Environmental LLC for commercial demolition of the former Harden County Hospital Annex Building. Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-five, consider approval of request by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, HR Director, to authorize the county judge to sign the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five renewal notice and benefit confirmation for health, dental, vision and life insurance rates offered by the Texas Association of Health, I'm sorry, Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Pool and the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Healthy County, County Specific and Senate Program, Program Participation Agreement. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? Anything new? It's just the renewal?
It's just the renewal. We've already discussed the rates prior to today.
Okay, no other changes to the terms?
No, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-six, consider and possibly approve updated data entry clerk and immunization WIC data entry clerk job descriptions in the Health Services Department as requested by Mrs. Harrington, HR Director. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Twenty-seven, consider and possibly adopt the Harden County Financial Policy. This is a very lengthy policy. It's a requirement of the General Land Office for the CDVG mitigation grant program. Uh, we helped, uh, Chambers County. Chambers County has a lot of things Harden County doesn't have, so the auditor, her, uh, first assistant, the treasurer, and y'all probably had some others that worked with you to narrow that down to where it, uh, fit our needs. Spent quite a bit of time on that and we appreciate y'all doing so. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And, uh, Mr. Tepper, can, we'll get that to you so you can get it over to Ms., uh, to the public management today so we can get that submitted.
Yes.
Number twenty-eight, consider approval of request by Ms. Sharon Whitley, Health Services Director, to authorize the county judge to execute a real property commercial lease agreement between Harden County Commissioner Precinct Three and Harden County Health Department WIC for leased office space located at six fifteen Highway one oh five west from Sour Lake, funded by grant funds for the purpose of performing WIC services one day a month at this location. Morning, Ms. Whitley.
Good morning.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall. Say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? That's working out good over there. Enough space and people are coming and appreciate it. Good deal. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-nine, consider approval of request by Ms. Sharon Whitley, Health Services Director, for permission to remove two surveillance specialist positions and create two new community health specialist positions at a pay rate of twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents an hour, effective October first, twenty twenty-four, and approval of the community health specialist job description. These positions will be grant funded at one hundred percent. Uh, Commissioner Cook and I discussed this yesterday and we also talked to the HR Director. Uh, these are some positions that have to be changed because the, uh, state grant requires it to be changed?
And, uh, the grant is coming to an end, but that project is coming to an end and it's all the co- covering surveillance, so we're picking up a second, well, the second project will not cover surveillance.
And the two people you have that are in that position now will go into a new position?
That's correct, and it will not be a pay raise increase, it's the same.
The pay, the amount they make now, the twenty-two eighteen is three percent on top of that and this all makes, uh, happens on, uh, October first, right?
That's correct.
All right.
Say.
I have motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye to Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, Sharon, you said the pay that they're currently making now with a three percent raise comes up to twenty-two eighteen now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I got that.
What is a suburban, a suburban specialist?
They work closely with Epi on, uh, disease investigations, like if we have an outbreak. So, or, or if we have to, um, we did have one a couple of years back and we had, they had to administer the vaccine, so they work closely with the Epi and also with immunizations.
The, um, these positions, the surveillance specialists, those are grant paid s- positions and not budgeted, they're not budgeted?
They're all grant paid by the state.
So you're not supplanting for the, the current grant that will then go into effect October the first?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirty, consider approval of request by Ms. Whitley for permission to remove one public health nurse, LVM position, and re- and replace with a new epidemiology nurse position at a pay rate of twenty-four dollars per hour, effective October first, twenty twenty-four, and approval of the updated epidemiology nurse job description. This position will be grant funded at one hundred percent. Ms. Whitley?
Um, we're adding, since we're taking away some surveillance, uh, specialists, the immunization grant will allow us to have an Epi nurse, and the Epi nurse can assist the epidemiologists and also work with, uh, immunizations in case we have to dose the vaccines due to, uh, a outbreak, a vaccine preventable outbreak.
So.
I have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye to Commissioner Young, and you do have a need for this epidemiology nurse position? You have a need for that person in Epidemiology Division, I guess, of the Health Services Department?
Yes, we're not gonna hire a new person, we're just gonna use one of the LVNs that we currently have.
Are, were they currently being paid by this surveillance grant?
No, they will be getting paid one hundred percent by immunization and one hundred percent by another immunization, um, well, we can't say COVID, a vaccine preventable immunization rate.
So, the LVM that's in, uh, public health is moving over to epidemiology nurse?
Fifty percent.
Okay, and so fifty percent's gonna make a difference, but where do you get the twenty-four dollars an hour? It's, it's the pay that she making now with three percent equal twenty-four?
Well, the current pay for October the first, if she stayed at her same pay rate, would be twenty-three eighteen.
Okay.
But I took the, I grabbed some information, the salary, um, I think it's a salary benchmark from Texas Association of City and County Health Officials, and we filed under a medium health department, and for a medium health department, uh, LVM, because, uh, most Epi nurses are RNs, so I took the average for a LVM, and the average for, uh, LVM for a medium health department is fifty thousand, and we're, that's currently a little below fifty thousand.
And I guess, uh, another question, uh, Sharon, that I have is the per- without calling names, the person that currently is in that position, have they been reclassified in the last two years before they got a raise?
No.
Okay.
No.
So you're not, you're not doing this, just get this person a raise?
No.
Okay. Uh, I guess, I, I mean, I'm for this, but I'm not for the twenty-four dollars an hour, I'm for the twenty-three eighteen, so I don't know. I, I don't mind this new position, I'm, I'm all for it, but I would say a, a three percent raise instead of going to twenty-four dollars an hour.
Is the person gonna pick up new duties from what they have now?
Yes.
Additional duties?
Yes.
More responsibilities?
Yes. And one of them will be to work with the nursing home, 'cause as you all know, we had an outbreak in the nursing home, and one of these surveillance specialists worked with the nursing homes, they were no longer ready to do that. Those duties will file on the, the, um, in the, the Epi nurse, so yes, they will be, and we have five, yes, five, um, nursing homes currently in Harden County.
So, the person that will be doing this will have additional duties. What's, what's the seniority of this person, how long they been with the county?
Well, right now, we have two LVNs and we're not singing the hoop, we want both of them to at least, I guess we'll say apply. We're gonna leave it for then, so we haven't decided at this point.
How long have these two people been here?
One of them has been here a total of four, and one of them have been here since twenty twenty, and the other one has been here a to- I think since twenty sixteen or seventeen. Yes, we just do not wanna hire anybody from outside, we wanna give the LVM, the nurses that we have, the opportunity.
I certainly understand where you're coming from and don't blame you at all for wanting to bring them up to what other nurses in that field, but we have to take into consideration our other employees, I mean, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall always brings out, you know, we don't want any animosity from one department to the another because we're showing portability, so that's where I'm coming from on that. Uh, is it required, I, I know you currently have a health nurse LVM, is it required in this new position to be a RN?
No, we have the choice, we just don't have the funding, we have one RN on staff. RNs make a whole lot more, and we don't have the funding to, um, hire more RNs.
So that can be an RN or an LVM?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a question, we're making all of these effective October first, how does the state grants run? And is there, is there any, 'cause I know a lot of times state funding comes in September?
Well, the immunization state grant, uh, last day is August thirty-first, and for the other grant, that ends in twenty, I wanna say twenty s- twenty twenty-seven. So, I hadn't submitted anything to the state, I just got the job descriptions for these, uh, job titles, and after this is approved in Commissioner's Court, whether it's approved in Commissioner's Court, then I'm gonna submit it to the state and it won't become effective to October first.
There won't be any lifetime because we're making it effective October first?
It will for the immunizations, but I'm gonna ask if I can, uh, at least amend the immunization grant.
Okay.
If it, if it's approved.
And then that'd be the state agency's choice to make that adjustment on the, correct?
Correct, whether or not they accept our amendment, that's correct.
Any other discussion?
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, just like, uh, boys, I have a problem with bringing it up to twenty-four, but you got that from the state on other?
Yes, from the Texas Association of City and County Health Officials, and the numbers that I do have, this is as of, um, September twenty twenty-two. The state is two years, well, Texas Association of City and County Health Officials is two years behind. So this is the, the salary based on twenty twenty-two, yes. And no, I'm not gonna come back to court and ask for a raise if it's different when they release the new numbers in twenty twenty-four.
I will, I will, uh, go with what the rest of the court recommends on this judge.
All right, we have a motion and second on the floor, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirty-one, consider approval of request by Ms. Sharon Whitley, Health Services Director, for permission to create a new public health specialist manager at a pay rate of twenty-four dollars per hour, effective October first, twenty twenty-four, and approval of public health specialist manager job description. This position will be funded, uh, by grant at one hundred percent. Ms. Whitley?
Okay, um,
If you know the questions are gonna be asked, so just go ahead and answer them now. Yes, ma'am.
Um, we were currently approved for a financial assistant, that position has been vacant for, I think, June, May, the year, and the public health specialist, that's currently, um, um, that person works closely with the financial assistant, and I'm not gonna hire a financial assistant, but, um, some of the qualifications for a financial assistant, that person, um, does not meet, so that's why I did a justification for her job description, so she can, uh, assume some of these duties.
Okay, and then is this a pay increase for this person that you planned to put in that position?
Yes, if we, uh-
Is it more than the three percent that we've already, uh, approved for October first?
Yes, it is.
How much more?
It's, she would be at twenty-two eighteen, and I'm asking for twenty-four, so I say close to two dollars, two dollars.
Just under two dollars and then, um, so is, does she have that much more job duties that she's going to be taking on and, and then how did you come up with that amount?
Well, right now, uh, some of the, well, the duties of the financial assistant, Tasha and I are doing that. And it will be a relief off of Tasha and I if we can, um, with the proper training, that she will be able to do the job. And I do think she can with the proper training.
And with the duties that she will have, is that gonna take some, uh, stress or some work off of the auditing department on what they're, uh,
Yes.
doing, and then also, uh, I know there's still some, uh, complications sometimes with time sheets for HR and the treasurer to deal with. Will this person be able to get trained up and take care of all that and maybe we can finally get some of those things under control?
Well, I would say yes to, um, the time sheets, we have something that we're gonna implement, that we're hoping to implement with, uh, the, um, IT department that I discussed.
Okay.
So, that will be, um, not an easy fix, but we're, yes, she'll be able to work with them, so eventually it will be a fix.
Okay.
Ms., uh, Sharon, again, uh, the person that's currently in this position that you're asking to, uh, reclassify in the last two years, have they se- have they been reclassified or had a raise above the three percent that the county gives in the last two years? Have you moved them to another position that would require more pay or allow them to have more pay in the last two years?
Yes, when we hired the financial assistant, uh, we re, uh, we moved her to a public health specialist so she can, a financial public health specialist, so she could work with the financial assistant, yes, and that was, I'm gonna say about two years ago, yes.
When you, and when you're saying financial assistance, assistant, are they only dealing with, uh, the grant aspect? I know everything over there is grant, so, uh, are they helping the auditor's office in grants?
That person was.
Okay.
But it's been vacant, June, May, the year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question.
But this person will?
Yes.
Do that? So there'd be a liaison between your office and, and state?
And a liaison between your office and the auditor?
Yes, yes.
This being a manager position, are they supervising?
Yes, yes, she will have to, uh, hopefully to be under her, yes.
So is she exempt?
No, no one is exempt except myself, Tasha, and Tasha, but no.
And it was, uh, I didn't write it down, I'm sorry, I keep, uh, sorry to keep asking these questions, two dollars and something, I owe more?
A little bit, two dollars, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You know, a lot of these questions
I know.
Come to us. And they're asking us and we're being grilled over this.
And that's why I wanna make sure I answer all of your questions, since I heard you say.
Anything further? All right, do we have a motion?
What happens if, if you don't get it?
Well, then I might have to go back to the drawing board with the state to see exactly what can we do about our financial reports, 'cause right now, Tasha and I are doing the majority of it. We're working with the state and with the auditor's office.
So if we, if we, if this court, and, and I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but if this court approves the position changes with just a three percent raise and not the twenty-four dollars an hour, you're good with that? I mean, you're asking for twenty-four.
For the, you talking about for this position?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm not good with it, but I have to accept it.
I would vote for it, uh, I'll tell the court I'd vote for it if it was with, uh, a three percent raise and not the twenty-four dollars.
Say.
Otherwise, I'm gonna vote against it.
Is that a motion? Motion by Commissioner Cooper?
That's my motion.
Twenty-two eighteen an hour plus three percent, is that right?
Yes.
And saying goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall?
I have, I have a question. She made, I'm sorry, she makes twenty-one fifty-three, the twenty-two eighteen is what it will be in October, if she don't, yes. I'm sorry.
Is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I have motion by Commissioner Cooper to approve with a pay rate of twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents an hour, effective October first, saying goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Number thirty-two, consider approval of request by Mr. Dell Wilford, thank you, Ms. Whitley.
Thank you.
Harden County Airport, Airport Hawthorne Field FBO to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four off airport fund budget to accommodate the purchase of an LED airport beacon by utilizing fourteen thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars of the airport fund balance to increase expense line item zero two two six six four dash five seven. Mr. Cooper? Anything you wanna say since the airport is here?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna, uh, turn the floor over to, uh, to Mr. Wilford on this one, uh, I don't know if any, did any of y'all bring the major plan, just in case anybody has any questions? This is something that, uh, we've been working on, Dell and I, and, uh-
This is just the beacon? We hadn't, not that third one yet. This one's the easy one.
This is the easy one.
Yes, sir.
Dell and I have talked about this beacon before, this is not the, the major one, but, uh, Dell and I have talked about this and, uh, I, I move and we accept this.
Say.
All right, I have motion by Commissioner Cooper, saying goodbye to Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? This is a need you've had for a while?
It's a need I've had for a while, we've worked on it for a couple of years and it's just becoming untenable to keep it going, and the prices have, uh, proven stabilized on these LED replacements, uh, which will be more, more maintenance free, and, uh, also the money in the airport fund that we're talking about utilizing here is money that we have been able to recover in grant reimbursements, uh, from things in the past so that we can utilize it for these things in the future. And this will be reimbursed at ninety percent through the ramp grant funding program through Texas Department.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirty-three, this is the department. Consider approval of request by Mr. Dell Wilford for the FBO to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget to accommodate an increase in the total project cost from one million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars to four million sixty-nine thousand four hundred dollars associated with the Texas Department of Transportation Airport Project Participation Agreement. For improvements to the Harden County Airport Hawthorne Field as follows, from the general fund balance, two thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, two, zero one zero seven hundred zero two two transfers to airport fund, same amount. Increase revenue in the transfers in general fund line item zero two two three ninety zero zero zero, same amount, two fifteen eight sixty. And increase expenditures in the construction cost line item, which will be a new line item, zero two two six six four five fifty, same amount, two fifteen eight sixty. If approved, correct the budget amendment, allocating general fund contingency as approved by Commissioner's Court on January ninth, twenty twenty-four. To increase the newly created expenditure line item zero two two six six four five fifty, construction cost in the amount of one thirty-seven eight forty. This will result in a total construction allocation of three hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, which is a ten percent match of the total project cost, three million five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars for construction. And that's all clear as mud, I know, and y'all can guess who wrote that. She's sitting in here laughing on the back row. I have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Y'all wanna discuss this, any?
Dale stopped by the office and gave me a copy of the master plans, and I've taken a look at it, and, uh, seems like a lot of cost can put in it. I know that, since I've been on the court, which has been a while now, that we've talked about it, it seems like every couple of years. So I'm satisfied with the meeting that Dale and I had.
Uh, Commissioner Cooper and I and Dale, and Dale's got some, uh, gentlemen here from, uh, I think our Tax Doc guy showed up. Thank you for being here. And engineers are here, and, uh, nothing's been pretty rough on them. This number was a lot higher back in, uh, April and May when they came back to us. Uh, it went up from the one point eight million to, uh, a much higher number than we're talking about today. And, uh, nothing told them they need to go sharpen their pencil and, and, uh, make some changes, and they did. And we appreciate all the work y'all done on this to get it to this point where, uh, it's still, I'll tell you, for me, a little hard to stomach, but it's much more, and maybe this is the way y'all did it, y'all finally did it this way on purpose, y'all came in and brought it down, so we said, oh, yeah, we'll go with that.
Yeah, it's, uh.
But this is, takes care of all the construction and some minor drains that needs to be done at the airport. There's been, you've been kinda working on this for the better part of a decade.
I have, yes, sir, uh, I first became affiliated with airport in October two thousand and ten. Uh, and at that point in time, we needed some repaving and, and remarketing. Uh, I inquired as to how, how to get that started. And, uh, through that process, uh, Judge Carraway sent a letter to Tax Doc Aviation requesting that project to be on the, on the drawing board. And we're here today. It took a lot of work and a lot of, uh, um, calling attention to our needs and, and working with people at Tax Doc Aviation, working with our state representative and other things to get us here. Uh, the, uh, and in the process, it continued to deteriorate a little bit, but, but we're here today. Uh, the, uh, very, it's very much needed, it's, uh, pretty extensive as to what they're gonna have to do is to rebuild some portions of the, of the runways and taxiways. Uh, we get, uh, some non-primary entitlement money each year for a hundred fifty thousand dollars that we, uh, if, if there's not a capital improvement project, which is what it's used for, it reverses back with our permission, uh, to, to the state. If it doesn't, if we don't turn it back to the state, then it gets sent back to Washington DC. If we, when we turn it back to the state, it's used for capital improvement projects for airports across the state. As the, our nine, the ninety percent that the state is funding on this project is gonna be funded in part by what other airports are returning, uh, back to the state to utilize for projects such as ours. And that's clear as mud, I understand that.
Right.
Uh, but we, we think we've got a, a good plan here, we've hammered it out to where it's gonna be the, the construction need that we need. There hadn't been a capital improvement project, uh, or any state or federal money spent out there other than maintenance, uh, since two thousand and four. So it's, uh, it's been a long time coming. Uh, we try to be very frugal with the funds that we spend from here and utilize, get funding where we can and, and, uh, save as much money as we can. So I've got Mr. Uh, Jason Frank here with Garber USA and his associate David, uh, Robert. Stand up, Robert Johnson's the chief, uh, our project engineer from, uh, Tax Doc Aviation. Uh, I'd like for Jason to address a little bit about why these project costs have gone up. So not only that, uh, I think we've been able to explain it to a lot of y'all, but maybe other folks that, that wanna know.
I bet they are.
And, um, he, they can get into that in more detail, and I, I'd like for them to take, if y'all have time for them, take a few minutes to expound on that.
Yeah, I will say this, Judge, uh, when Dale came to me, the only thing left on his pencil was the eraser.
Same with mine. And Dale, Dale mentioned that, uh, uh, the airport really hasn't had a capital improvement plan for twenty years. And in that twenty years, the FAA has made design changes, uh, oh, what, three times now, definitely? Yeah, they've changed the design three times over. So it really puts y'all behind the curve quite a bit. Uh, it wouldn't help in this effort, and he's done a Herculean effort for the county here to get the airport back on the national plan of integrated airports. Now, in the United States, there's about nineteen thousand seven hundred airports in US. About thirty-three hundred of those are considered NIPUS, which are critical, uh, to the time of defense and to emergency services. Twenty-nine hundred of those are general aviation airports like y'all, y'all, and fortunately, Dale was able to get y'all back on that list. That gets you the non-primary entitlement funds. So in the case of emergencies, which we always have down here, live on the Gulf Coast, so our friend Hurricane lets go through. So it helps to bring supplies and whatnot to the county when needed. Uh, in that time, as we've known, uh, with the changes in design standards and, of course, COVID, saw a increase in construction cost of thirty-five to fifty-five percent over the last four years especially. Uh, fortunately, right now, uh, some of those costs are coming down. Uh, one of those is asphalt, I've seen a, oh, about a sixty-point drop in asphalt, uh, since the beginning of the year. So around twenty percent based on the, uh, producer price index that the, uh, Fred puts out. So it's one of the tools we use to help gauge costs. So, um, we did scale back the project quite a bit. We had a lot of electrical, a lot of drains in there because it was things that we saw that the airport, we, as y'all know, we get a good gully washing around here, the end of that runway is underwater, which is always bad news. So, uh, this is step one, we need to get the pavement improved, uh, based on, uh, geotechnical reports that we've received. And the new FAA standards yields, yields quite a bit under your structural capacity. Uh, so we're making that improvement now, same with the apron. Uh, we're improving that apron pavement to really get you back up to the strength you need to be. So this will be our, our first step, and then we, we move on from there with, uh, like I said, less, uh, less stressful steps when it comes to pavement, more grading, drains, as we've all discussed in chambers before. Uh, things that need to be, uh, need to happen out there to really, uh, get that water off the, the end of the runway, keep the drainage positive, to keep y'all in a, a good life. We wanna make sure that y'all stay on that NIPUS and be able to gain those, those funds and have funding up to ninety percent. Because when you're paying ten cents on the dollar, that's, that's a pretty good deal. Um, right now, I think it was twenty seventeen, was that right? Was the last time the economic study was done by?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems right.
Twenty seventeen, uh, Hardin County, uh, the economic impact was around, the airport, uh, economic impact, uh, to the county was around eight hundred thousand dollars. Typically on a construction project, when you have a project like this come about, uh, you can see an, uh, economic impact of roughly a buck and a half to two dollars sixty-five cents or so, uh, per dollar spent. And so when you all are paying ten cents on that dollar, that's, that's a pretty good deal. Uh, people have nice, you know, have to buy fuel, have to buy supplies, eat down the restaurant. Uh, hopefully you get a, uh, a local contractor to do the asphalt for you. So that's all money that's generated and stays within the community. So, um, I think that, uh, that hopefully will ease the commissioners', uh, worries of, of such a large expenditure at this time. But, uh, I believe in, in the end, y'all, you'll see the impact, uh, uh, with the improvements down at the airport.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I think one, one major thing that, uh, I need to put in the minutes of, of the court today is also originally whenever y'all came back with your plans for everything out there, the drainage was included in that original. So we have a drainage study that has already been done in its own file. If we ever go to that next step, we won't have to go through that drainage study, cause this already been, uh,
Correct.
Paid for.
Yeah, so paid for a lot of that stuff already. We've got, while the pile layout and everything, uh, designed up, and we're looking at the, the structures that we originally had in the plan, uh, we can get those, you know, installed, put back in as, you know, as the next step to get to improve the drainage out there at the airport.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Wilson? Did you want to ask the gentleman if the Tax Doc say anything? He's the one to make sure that the, uh, state brings the money that needs to be, uh.
And he, and he brought a lot of backup with him today. Are you about a client, Caitlin, are you here?
I'm a project manager, but I'm here.
Project manager. You're a project manager, oh, my, project manager.
Ken with us today, they're a project manager.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Uh, uh, Tax Doc's committed to, um, this project, and we, we see it as a need. And, um, this is just phase one, um, as Jason talked about. And, um, we had to do some shuffling around with our budget to make it work, cause we weren't expecting it either. But we, we did it, and, uh, we, we think this is gonna be a good project, uh, for the airport, and we're catching it at a good time where we can make these, um, rehab fixes right now. And, uh, it should pull the airport over for a long, long period of time after this. And then the next phase will be a drainage project, and we're still in the works on that one, on where we're gonna fit you in. We're thinking, it, it can't happen anytime, uh, sooner than FY twenty-six, our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. So hopefully fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we can get y'all in for that drainage project.
Now, don't forget, I told you we only wanted to pay two percent on that one? You said you'd change.
I'll, I'll take it back to the office.
That's what you said, I'll take it back off. Um, go ahead.
There, Mr. Wilson. Who's in the back, back there?
Oh, Caitlin?
Uh, Caitlin McGonigal.
Okay.
She's our, um, she, she's in your project manager for us.
And the gentleman?
The gentleman?
Um, Brian Mozer, I'm a project manager, but not in this part of the state.
Okay, okay.
And then we have Jamal Mabroth, he's also gonna be project manager for us.
Thank y'all, y'all.
Yes, greatly appreciate, uh, y'all coming, this is a very big deal for Hardin County. The project, and then the money that the Commissioners' Court is, uh, gonna vote on to, uh, commit here in just a few minutes. Real big deal for us, so we really appreciate all the time you spent on this with us, and then going back to the drawing board. And, uh, as you said, hopefully here in, in a couple of years, we can come back and finish this up to do all the, uh, drainage improvements that are needed out there, including the detention pond and things such as that. One more thing that I was thinking about, we all were talking, is when we discussed this before, and y'all came up with this estimated construction cross, cost, the three point five three seven. I know Commissioner Cooper and I have both kinda reiterated that we don't wanna see it go over this, and we just wanna reiterate that here again today in public. Hopefully, once the bids come in, we're not back in here again asking for any more money, so.
We definitely don't want that either, but simply, we, we do our best, level best effort to, uh, estimate the project based on, you know, for market condition. Like I said, fortunately, asphalt prices are coming down.
Yeah.
Um, with, uh, with us, with being a general aviation airport, the FAA allows us to use, uh, a tax stock mix that's just similar to the FAA mix, it's just there's a tighter quality controls and a little bit higher of, uh, of asphalt binder grade on that. Typical tax stock mix can use like a sixty-four minus twenty-two, fifty-six minus twenty-two. We're usually at a seventy minus twenty-two because asphalt on airports is just a little bit different than the roadways. Your roadways is constantly getting worse, so the oil's always moving through there, and where asphalt on an airport, it's sitting out there just cooking in the sun, so you just don't have.
That's a different grade that goes on there?
Yeah, it's just, it's a different, it's a harder grade that goes on there just to, to, you know, so to keep it robust. Cause like I said, it's just weathering versus having traffic on it allowing the oil to move around.
I did wanna make the distinction between that, cause he said a couple of times asphalt prices are going down, and we're seeing record highs.
Really?
Yeah.
So, but the last prices we've got, uh.
Well, Tax Doc's buying up all the asphalt, so it costs more for the little guys.
We actually, uh, saw, uh, project over at Houston, at the Houston Airport, uh, the price there went down from about four hundred, was it, how that one was five, five thirty? Yeah, the high-end binder went down from five hundred thirty dollars a ton to two hundred sixty dollars a ton, and this was just, uh, last month.
I wonder if we can put airport asphalt on our roads.
I don't think you want that, contractors wanna do that quality control.
Thank y'all.
Any other discussion? Uh, just to, uh, refresh everyone's memories from a while ago, that motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all again very much for your time. Now, we're about halfway through. Number thirty-four, a little over halfway. Consider approval of request by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, Elections Administrator, to approve an order calling for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election. So, uh, this is a presidential election coming up?
Yes, sir.
Anything we need to know about to differ from few past orders that we've, uh, agreed to?
So it is a little different this time, um, the branch locations aren't on here. Um, in the past, I didn't have them, but then some changes were made and we had to amend the order. So in order to not have to do that, I've left them off. Um, and also, I, in the past, I've put on there who we're having a joint election with. Um, but sometimes they don't order that election, and so, you know, it's, it's on the order and we're not even contracting with them. So I did leave those two things off this time.
Ninety-five, thank you.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirty-five, consider approval of request by Ms. Freeman to approve an order of appointment for election judges and alternate election judges for Hardin County to serve for a period beginning on September, Sep- September first, twenty twenty-four and ending on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we have the list of election judges here, they all look like, uh, most of our, our usual, uh, election judges, are there any new ones on here?
Not that I saw, um, I will say that the Democratic Party has, uh, a little more than nineteen.
Okay.
Um, but there's really no set limit, and this allows us to have backups just in case, um, we can't, you know, withhold those people that are usually at allocation.
Sounds good, they all do a fine job, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and if anybody wants to know those names, they can get it from Alyssa, or they'll be in the minutes on the website here in just a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number thirty-six, consider and possibly authorize, uh, request made by Ms. Shirley Cook, past successor collector, to issue tax refunds as follows. One thi- these are all tax year twenty twenty-three, by the way. One thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents to Sally Byrd. One thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents to Jimmy and Ray Norwood. One thousand two hundred forty dollars and twenty-one cents to Kyle and Jennifer Meads for a total refund of three thousand six hundred twenty-three, I'm sorry, three thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. These are all homestead, uh, ARB change in value, over sixty-five, disabled veteran, uh, reasons for refunds.
So, Mike?
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? Anything you wanna say, Lisa?
No, sir, thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
Lisa, can you call me up about one of these?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirty-six, no, thirty-six, thirty-seven. Consider approval of request by Mrs. Regina Walton, Health Inspector, to extend funds from Entergy Grants Foundation in the amount of one thousand dollars to be utilized for the annual courthouse Christmas tree lighting event on December third, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooks, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you. Everybody will eat better.
That's right. Number thirty-eight, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to authorize the county judge to execute DR forty-four eighty-five Texas COVID-nineteen Pandemic Sub Grant Award contract with the Texas Division of Emergency Management outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR forty-four eighty-five Project O-four-oh-five. Hardin County LHS generators, the amount of one million three hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, including the local cost share of one hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars to be paid by Lurmiton ISD. This is for the, uh, PAC, which we sometimes call the Dome.
Yes, sir.
And then there's a field house or gym back behind there where first responders would sleep, and, uh, the farmer superintendent asked us to, uh, get a grant to put a generator on that building as well, as well, so that's these two buildings?
Yes, sir, it's the, the far back gymnasium.
And it'll run both of those facilities fully?
Yes, sir, it will have, uh, the capability for heating and cooling.
And we'll do all the legwork and the school's gonna pay the match?
Yes, sir.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion?
You said this was made by previous, uh, superintendent?
Pre- previous superintendent, probably about three years ago, asked us if we could get a generator for the Dome when, uh, Aaron identified this grant, which we applied for, what, close to two years ago?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we went out there to do the walkthrough, the superintendent asked in, could we add that other building? Because that's the place where the first responders sleep, is in that gym back in the back. Uh, Aaron added it on and didn't think it would get approved, but it did.
The current, the new superintendent, is he aware of it?
Yes, sir, he is aware of it, and, uh, they already have funds, the funds set aside, so, uh, we briefly discussed this last week, and, uh, he's aware that the MOU will be coming, hopefully, if, if y'all agree to that. Uh, and then he will ask for more funds for his school. He is aware of the total amount of funds that he needs.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirty-nine, consider approval of request by Mr. Tupper to authorize the county judge to execute a memorandum, memorandum, memorandum of understanding for Lurmiton ISD outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR forty-four eighty-five dash four-oh-five. Hardin County LHS generators, including the local cost share responsibilities of matching funds totaling one twenty-five five-ten.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Cooks, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number forty, consider approval of request by Mr. Tupper to allocate up to one, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars of American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one funding toward the purchase and installation of six interactive information kiosks within the, within the Hardin County Courthouse and Courthouse Annex Building. You know, when you first come into the public entrance here and you turn right, there's an old, um, court board or something behind a glass there with little letters that you put on there, and as, uh, people move offices or new people come in and go, we have to go find some letters and put on there. A lot of the E's are actually threes now, because we can't find those letters anymore, they're brittle and they're broke. I asked Aaron a while back to look at putting something electronic there, and he came up with this idea. I asked Aaron a while back to look at putting something electronic there and he came up with this idea. And then uh we looked at putting a couple more throughout the courthouse. So I think there'd be two on the first floor. Is there two going on the second floor?
So there'll be three on the first floor, two on the second floor. One of those will be uh strictly toward the district clerk.
Okay.
It is an information hub as well.
Okay.
And then one in the annex.
All right. And this uh ARPA funding, you checked with the grant administrator and this isn't a eligible expense?
Yes, sir. It is eligible. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
I've got one. How hard would it be, and this is just an idea, uh to outlay the displays in the dome? With people wanting to push a button and like where it talks about the paintings, what they depict and what have you. Could that be added?
We we can add anything. So yes, sir. It it could be added.
Okay. You said there's three going on the first floor?
Yes, sir.
Where I know one will go by the entrance. Where's the other two going?
Uh, at the far end of the hall, there's another court board area there. So we're going to power into it here. And then the the third one could be close to the dome or it could be uh at the T there, uh in the middle of the first floor facility. Uh, the third one's basically.
I'd say it's better to put it down at the dome and let's have information on there about the district of Harden County and anything else that uh we give with Jimmy McCann. I'm sure he has some ideas with some, we'll put some information there.
Certainly.
That cover all your first four entrances.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any other discuss- discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Forty-one, consider approval of request from Mr. Aaron Tupper to allocate up to three hundred fifty thousand of the ARPA funds toward the purchase and installation of six permanent LED public information digital signs throughout Harden County. Want to uh pull this up. It was not in our package, but Aaron had emailed this to me, I think, on Friday. Commissioner Cooper had asked me what this was yesterday. So let me pull it up here where everybody can see it. This is what we're talking about doing. This was actually an idea of uh our grant administrator. When we were talking about some various projects the other day, we do have some unallocated funds and uh Orange County, some other counties are doing this as as well, but she told us Orange County was one of the closest counties to us doing this. They're putting in some pod locations in Orange County. They're actually building buildings and then putting up these signs at the buildings. The idea that we had was to put up signs like these at each of the uh precinct barns. Of course, uh Commissioner Four, or Commissioner Cook's precinct barn is not really on a well-traveled area. So we thought about if we go this route, maybe we could talk to ESD two and put it on the highway back there behind your barn. And maybe we could put a sign similar to this without the LED board on it in front of your office. But uh we also thought about putting one here somewhere on the courthouse square and then maybe another one uh over uh on North Ninety-two, maybe at Judge Brewer's location or somewhere like that. These would be some LED display signs where we can get information out to the public better, especially uh those that drive these routes regarding uh anything regarding storms. Uh, I was I was, I asked and was told no, that we couldn't put anything on here about particular uh elections, like vote for somebody. But we can say it's election day and and to go to this website to find where to vote and things like that. Uh, burn bands, I mean, any of that kind of stuff that we put out on social media, we could uh have these signs to put them up. It's an idea. It's not uh not definite, but my thinking is if y'all agree to it, we can go out for bids, see what they come in at. Um, we're also going to ask uh the person, agent will come forward at the next meeting and ask to go out for bids for the uh jail work. The uh architect finished the uh design work on all of the jail work that we've already talked about allocating funds for in the past. We'd also allocated funds for doing some work here in the courthouse that we de-allocated, but we're going to go out for bids for that anyway if it's authorized by the court. Also get the bids for the hurricane safe room and basically finalize all bids for ARPA-funded projects. Have everything ready by October third so that it can be presented in commissioner's court on October the eighth. And we can decide then, we can have more details about everything, exactly what work is going to be done, what it's going to cost and make final decisions uh then on on the spending so we get contracts in place. The deadline for all contracts uh for that funding has got to be done by December thirty-first. I want it done by October first, but we're not going to make that. But I think we can make things. So that's what we're thinking and any other discussion on that?
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The backup um documentation that was sent to the agenda says not to exceed three hundred and thirty thousand.
Yes, ma'am. I added uh some more so we make sure that we had enough to cover these signs and a sign at precinct four.
I just wanted to know which amount was correct.
It's three fifty. Yes, ma'am. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Forty-two, consider and possibly authorize a purchasing agent to solicit bids for the purchase and installation of six permanent LED public information digital signs at locations determined to be determined throughout the county.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Forty-three, consider approval of request by the county attorney, Mr. Matthew Minnick, to apply for a grant through the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts to provide prosecutors offices in eligible rural rural counties to ensure professional law enforcement and legal representation throughout the state pursuant to State Bill twenty-two eighty-eighth regular session. This is the uh SB twenty-two grant. It's the next year and it's the same amount, two seventy-five?
That's correct.
Two hundred seventy-five thousand.
Certainly. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number forty-four, consider approval of request by Rebecca Walton, District Attorney, to apply for a grant through the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. It's the same grant, SB twenty-two.
Certainly.
Same reason, same amount. Stay here all this time and we're not even going to ask any questions. All right, the motion was by
me.
Kirkendall, seconded by Young?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything you want to say?
Oh, thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
And just for public record, we beat this harsh to death in this last couple of rounds.
Forty-five, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to submit a grant application to the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five rural law enforcement grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars on behalf of the chair pursuant to Senate Bill twenty-two through the adoption of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four. No matching funds required.
Certainly. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And um we're very thankful to the state for this funding. Unprecedented. We got it once before and we're going to get it again, it looks like. That's great. Yes, it's not unprecedented. We've got it once before. Number forty-six, consider approval of request by Mrs. Angela Gore, County Auditor, to provide a supplement pay in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to the First Assistant Internal Auditor for additional duties associated with the Senate Bill twenty-two reporting requirements. If approved, compensation will be sourced from excess funds in the auditing department, nine nine zero one zero four nine five one oh three. Salaries assistance on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Did you vote?
No, sir.
Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I wish we could do more.
I do too.
Forty-seven, consider possibly authorize a direct purchasing agent to pu- publish increases of salaries and expenses for elected county and precinct officers in the CLGB pursuant to section one five two point zero one three, Local Government Code. The notice was sent out to all elected officials on July the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. And these amounts are included in the proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget that I filed on July thirty-first.
Certainly. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Forty-eight, setting a public hearing to receive comments from citizens of Harden County concerning the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Harden County budget October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirty of twenty twenty-five. And direct purchasing agents to publish notice pursuant to section one eleven point zero zero seven C, Local Government Code. And propose to set this public hearing for nine AM on August twenty-seventh.
Certainly. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Steve, you didn't want to get breakfast again?
Number forty-nine, setting a public hearing to uh receive comments from citizens of Harden County concerning the proposed tax rate of zero point five zero two four seven three per one hundred dollar valuation for the twenty twenty-four tax year and direct the purchasing agent to public publish the notice pursuant to section twenty-six point oh six of the tax code. And I propose that we set it for the same time, nine AM, August twenty-seventh.
Certainly.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to add that that is the uh notable revenue tax rate that we proposed there. Fifty, consider adoption of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four to support Southeast Texas Regional Planning Co- Commission Metropolitan Planning Organizations efforts to redesign and expand its planning area boundaries to accept Dasper County tax.
Certainly. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? No, but y'all been working on this for a little while?
Yes, sir. Uh, and the only reason it had been a little while is because uh Mr. Dickinson was required by statute to wait a certain amount of time before they were brought in and they they were accepted into the overall uh COG.
Two or three years?
Couple of years ago, but they're just now eligible. And uh I will say Judge uh Allen has been uh meeting uh in all the meetings for the committee. So they're ready to go.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifty-one, announcement of executive closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one two oh seven one one A for consultation with the Harden County Attorney, Matthew Minnick, to seek advice about pending or contemplated litigation. Uh, we were going to ask everybody to leave, but the commissioner's asked me this morning to for us to excuse ourselves and meet in the uh conference room right back here. So we're going to do that. Mr. Minnick, will you come on in? And then Mr. Tupper, Mr. Woodward and Miss, I almost called you Whitney, but it's him. If y'all will wait right in here in the Lisa's office and we'll get you in when we need you. And we'll be uh in closed session until we come back. It shouldn't take too long.